To our conduct of business.
9A, Conduct of Business, Receive Report and Adopt Resolution Approving the New Recreation and Aquatic Center Conceptual Design.
Well, our team is assembling. May I give a little introduction to this item?
Yes. Just for our audience, this is Group 4 is going to give a presentation. It will be a little bit, so City Manager will begin.
Thank you. So, this is a very exciting night. It's exciting because we have tonight the opportunity to request City Council final approval of the completion of the first phase of design development for our new recreation center and community center to be built on the site of the existing Veterans Memorial Center that has served our community for over 60 years and is in need of updating, refreshing, and the opportunity to look forward to the needs and interests of our community into the next number of decades. Tonight, we have Group 4 Architects and their team to present to you the results of their six-month-long process to complete the conceptual design phase of this project. And again, we're asking for your specific action tonight to approve at the conclusion of the presentation. We're asking for your action to approve by resolution the completion of this phase of the project. I'd ask your indulgence in that the team has prepared what I hope will be a very interesting and informative presentation, and it is a little bit lengthy because we wanted to make sure that the City Council and the public are well-informed about the results of this conceptual design process and what we can look forward to going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dawn Marcus, a principal with Group 4 Architecture. And here with me this evening is David Schnay, another principal. And then also from Group 4, we have Vance Stoner, as well as Dahi Ming, who's been working on the project diligently. Our consulting architect from BSW is Stephen Springs. George Dyne's from Councilman Hans Sacker is our aquatic specialist. And also from SWA, our landscape architect is Marco Exposito. So, as your City Manager mentioned, we are thrilled to be here this evening to present the conceptual design report for the new aquatics and recreation center. What we have, just as an overview in the agenda, is an update on the project schedule, a summary of the outreach that we've done to date, as well as reviewing the proposed building program, the building plans, site plans, and floor plans, looking at our strategy for the parking, looking at project cost factors in terms of the construction cost model, as well as something that we've actually escalated in our project schedule to bring to you tonight, which is the operational analysis, something that we thought would give you a little bit more information to help you make an informed decision tonight. And then lastly, David is going to be presenting the conceptual design. So, as we look at the last six months, it's been pretty intense, taking us through design alternatives, from site alternatives to program alternatives, conceptual alternatives to the recommended conceptual design which we're presenting here tonight. In terms of the engagement that we've done, Advisory Committee, we work with very closely once a month, just completed our last or fifth Advisory Committee meeting at the early part of June. The Advisory Committee provided us great guidance and oversight as the project progressed, working closely with all the city departments and stakeholders. Over 14 meetings were conducted. Many of them were like recreation. We met with them four times, really wanting to make sure that all the technical aspects of the project were reviewed with them, their input gained, and that we were able to incorporate them as the design progressed. Public meetings, this is our third council meeting. Since we've started, we presented to Parking Recreation Commission three times and to the Planning Commission two times. That sounds impressive, but I think what's even more impressive is how much engagement we got from this community, over 1,700 participants. This is through online surveys for two rounds of outreach, as well as community meetings, open houses, and pop-up kiosks that we're having at the Easter egg hunt, as well as Community Days. And I think what's really telling about this engagement is how passionate people were about this project and how excited they were to share their input and help give us ideas as we move forward, all of which we are incorporating and reflecting in the design as you will see it tonight. In terms of the program review, I'm going to hand this over to Stephen, and he's going to review that for us.
Thank you, Dawn. So, as a result of all that public outreach, of course, a lot of meetings with staff and advisory boards and et cetera, we really developed a consensus-based program. And it's worth noting, too, is that the goal isn't just for consensus. The goal is to really build enthusiasm, and we really believe that we've done that. But even a project of this size and scale, all projects have limitations. So, not everybody can have everything they ever wanted in a building like this. So, there was a framework for narrowing down what is the program of this building. So, what you see on the slide before you is that sort of the result of that exercise, and most of that are things you would expect that we've talked about a number of times, for example, gymnasium, year-round aquatics, fitness and wellness. But also distilling what are the other major components in terms of conference rooms, classrooms, meeting space, the community hall, we heard loud and clear was a major priority earlier, childhood education. So, these components aren't necessarily set in stone in terms of their individual size, or how many of them might be in the building. But the goal really is to come out of conceptual design, not with a precise plan, but a very firm foundation based on all this good input we've had, and really to set up the true scheme, the next phase for schematics, set that process up for success. So, this probably looks familiar to most of you. The building, new building is situated basically where the old building was. I'm not going to go too much into the site plan. That will come later in the presentation. But the kind of the premise of the three major components of aquatics generally on the east with recreation, gymnasium in the middle, community hall, and program spaces on the east. So, what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through this concept plan. Again, this is to blow up what you just saw. So, the main entrance would be generally on the east side, and this dot, if you will, I kind of call it the "you are here" dot. So, that would be your control point. So, the overarching concept of this plan is, again, to give us a good framework and a good foundation for design, but also flexibility as we move forward, because one thing we know is some things will change, that the design will evolve. So, what this allows us to do with this particular plan and this control point, for instance, is turn right to program spaces, turn left to aquatics, continue west, potentially to aquatics. And there's another node here that will allow us potentially on a seasonal or sort of Easter Sunday situation, for example, to have another control point, or allow the evolution of the business model to provide it maybe a different price point, if you will, in that kind of area. So, we're trying to set up a plan that won't fall apart later in the process if you guys make a different kind of decision based on operations. So, part of that involves cost recovery considerations as well. So, I might try not to steal all of George's thunder, but the idea here is that your program spaces are bundled, your recreation spaces are bundled, your wet spaces are bundled, fitness and weight area represent a high cost recovery potential. These areas would potentially have a fair amount of cost recovery. Gym as well. Indoor pool tends to be cost negative because it's a high operational cost, but we have party rooms situated there to help mitigate that. Those are high revenue spaces. So, all these considerations are kind of stirred into the pot, if you will, to inform the cost models that you'll see a little bit later in the presentation. And then upstairs, the community hall. So, there's vertical circulation in the main lobby to take you up. The community hall overlooks the park. We're seeing some pretty dynamic views and even an outdoor deck as part of that to really make that an attractive rental space. This is another high revenue potential in terms of addressing cost recovery. Some classroom space upstairs and a group exercise room upstairs. There's a potential for a walking track even in the gym.
And with that, I'm going to pass the baton back. Thank you.
Okay. And so then, from our many visits and what we have heard and seen from the community, parking is of very high concern, not just in the park from what we've heard tonight, but other places in the city as well. And per your city zoning requirements, 171 spaces are required. And just to do our due diligence and look at best practices, we also looked at what is called the ITE, International Transportation Engineers Manual, and that number calculates to be 180 spaces. And so, as we're looking at the site and we're looking at strategies to meet this park in need, definitely as we look at where the existing recreation center is and that existing parking lot, we're looking at opportunities to improve that, provide drop-off space, ADA spaces, safe circulation. So, what's there is now is currently 73 spaces with the improvements I just mentioned. That actually reduces slightly to 71 spaces. Other opportunities for improvement, a real significant opportunity is over at the Playground and Corporation Yard. Currently, there's 33 spaces there. As we're looking at opportunities to increase parking, but not decrease park space, this is a really good opportunity. We're coming in and being more efficient in the parking layout and just working within the constraints of the hardscape and areas to, I will call it the east, towards the bay. We're actually able to increase the parking spaces to 89 spaces. So, we're able to gain 56 spaces just by being creative and working over on that area. As we look for other potential parking, the shared pool parking, which is over shared with the church on the south side of the site, currently there's 69 spaces there. There have been preliminary discussions on opportunities to increase shared parking use over there, the empty lot there, very preliminary and not actually even necessary as we look at the proposed parking count for this early phase of 229 spaces. But definitely, as opportunities may arise in the future, it is a fallback to add additional spaces as the city may desire. So, with that, we're going to step into project cost factors, our project cost model, and operational analysis. So, as we look at operational and capital costs, strategies for managing capital costs, and our Advisory Committee is probably a little tired of hearing me say that this is something that needs to be done diligently throughout the project, is really managing these construction costs, especially today in our economy. And ways that we're looking at doing that is planning for flexibility, designing to accommodate phased implementation such as the additional parking that I just mentioned, as well as potentially the outdoor pool as an add alternate, including bid alternates is a way that we are planning flexibility, agility. So, if the market goes one way, we can adjust without losing a step in the process and the schedule. So, very important in terms of that cost management, as well as considering multiple bid packages. And this is something definitely during schematic design that can be further explored, but really wanting to consider how to mitigate impacting of park users, how to look at reducing both costs as well as the project schedule, maybe doing an early bid package for some of the site work, some of the parking work, get that done, let that be up, let the park function, potentially then go move into the building bid package. These are all strategies, nothing set in stone, and definitely will be explored in detail with city staff as well as city council in next phases. And then the comprehensive budgeting. So, the cost model that I'll show includes all soft costs, includes furniture, fixtures, and equipment contingencies, all the known costs that we can identify, and allowances for those unknown costs in terms of escalation and contingencies. In terms of the operational cost goals, very clear hearing, that is, we look at increasing the facility size that proportionally definitely cannot increase the operational costs as we just got through our budget exercise tonight, but really looking at ways to provide sufficient revenue to offset this additional square footage, additional programs and services that can be provided to the community. So, looking at designing for efficient, flexible operations, spaces that are easy to survey and operate and can adjust for seasonal or special event uses, as well as consider operational efficient design. One of the things we have mentioned is the opportunity potentially to design photovoltaics as an option for the building so that the utility cost might be offset by the energy generated in the site. And some refinements to the building roof and the conceptual design, David will review just in a short minute. So, looking at our project budget cost model, kind of breaking this up into pieces as packages for you just because they seem to be, as I presented the site plan, you could see how there were different pieces on different parts of the site. So, we've kind of broken it up that way logically. So, looking at the building and the adjacent parking, as well as the site around it, we're looking at a budget of $39 million, and this includes the furniture, fixtures, and equipment soft cost, as well as site work, site preparation, parking and landscape, as well as outdoor pool as a potential add alternate. The City Parkway Creek and Associated site work is $2.3 million, with the Corporation Yard parking lot just at $1 million. And then the escalation and project hard cost contingencies are at $7.2 million. So, right now, looking at a project cost model at $49.5 million, understanding clearly that the city's budget for this work is $50 million. So, with that, I'm going to hand this over for operational analysis, and George will walk us through that.
Good evening. As we've mentioned, the facility will have a tremendous effect on the residents and community of San Bruno in terms of recreation, health, fitness, socialization. But with that also comes an effect on the operational budget. And so, this piece of the study was included at this phase to give a preliminary look at the effects that the facility will have on the operating annual budget for the city of San Bruno. We start that with researching the, excuse me, market area, knowing that there's 44,000, approximately 44,000 residents in San Bruno, but that we also have another 500,000 people within about a 15-minute drive time. We have a graphic there on the right that just shows some of the area aquatic and fitness and recreational providers up and down the peninsula that some of the, you know, community here would currently use. And so, this is really the starting point as we start to look at the number of visits that the facility will gain and the types of revenue opportunities that exist. Some of the premises that we start out with are, first off, with the facility budget, we are including both full and part-time personnel. We're including operating expenses, repair and maintenance budgets, utility cost for the pools, as well as the buildings, chemical cost, you know, a variety of operational supplies, both for the building and for the program. We also, working out of the premise that the indoor pool would operate year-round, the seasonal, outdoor pool would be seasonal, but that the facility overall could see in between 270 and 300 visits a day in terms of daily admission and monthly or annual passes that would be based on the market rates for other comparable facilities within this area. And so, looking at utilization and market rates of similar facilities, that helps us to look at the number of visits. And then also working with city staff, we've generated the operational revenue and expenses for the facility. When we start to look at revenue, we have a variety of means and programs that will generate revenue for the recreation and aquatic centers. We mentioned this will have a tremendous impact here on the San Bruno community from, you know, just the monthly passes and daily admissions. These are typically generated primarily through the fitness and the aquatic areas. You know, it's a recreational gym for cardio and fitness swimming and lap swimming, recreational swimming at the outdoor pool during the summer season. But we also look at swim lessons and water fitness and recreational classes. We looked at camps and birthday party rentals. The community hall obviously would have rentals associated with it, as Stephen mentioned. And so, we take all these, we break them into separate categories, but really find that there could be anywhere from $2.4 to $2.7 million in total revenue on an annual basis for the facility. And so, what our next slide shows is how that looks compared to the proposed 2018, 2019 budget that you heard about earlier. And then in terms of the revenue and expenses, that $2.4 to $2.7 million range for revenue, and then a $3.1 million range for expenses. So, overall, the facility is coming close to 80% on the low end for cost recovery, and then upwards of 90% on the high end when you look at the expenses versus the revenue on an annual basis. And so, with that, I will turn it over to David, who can take you through the conceptual design strategies.
Great. Thank you, George. And it's a privilege to present now the conceptual design, and we, through this phase, try to accomplish three things. First of all, to create a beautiful recreation and aquatic center. Two, to enhance the park that it's going in, which is so important. And three, to reflect and celebrate community values. So, first of all, what is conceptual design phase? What is that? The easy way to think of it is between starting, which we did in January, and when we get ready to go out to bid. But that's 100% of the design phase. At conceptual design, we're at the 15% milestone. So, we're just very, very early in. And what I can show you now, I can guarantee is, nothing will look exactly like this when it's done, but we're setting the big directions of where the project's going. We're setting where the project should be, the building should be located, what are the key design strategies, and what are the design values. And so, with that, the way we figure that out and how we celebrate community values is through all that community engagement. In addition to the programmatic questions, we're asking what were people's design values. Underpinning it in the first round, and just to repeat, three design values were essential. First was to create a warm and inviting building. Second was to have great indoor/outdoor connections. And the third was to enhance and engage the park. And so, with that, we, as Stephen Springs presented earlier, we settled on the site strategy of going all-new construction at the hill, basically replacing the current facility, where Recreation Center, where it is today. So, coming in round two, we presented multiple design strategies. How do we meet those various goals? And we had two strategies, the Park Pavilions and the Park Arc. And the Park Pavilion scheme had two-to-one responses from it. But as the nature of this early stage of design, we can take the best features of both and combine them together in a hybrid design. We also, it was great to be out on city days in the park and be able to look at the building and say, how do you love what the building looks like today, the Recreation Center, we'd like it to look better. Accent materials, just judiciously using some select materials somewhere, where can we enhance what the exterior would look like. Warm materials, very much setting and fitting to the park setting of terracotta or wood, we're up there. And then particularly the park setting, how do we make this building and the indoor/outdoor connections, what type of outdoor spaces, working with our landscape architect, community gathering, interactive amenities, flexible lawns, speak to the social nature of this facility. People want to be able to gather around the building and indoor/outdoor connections. And you'll see all of these strategies manifesting itself in our great unveiling right here, our artist rendering, just fresh off the drawing boards. What we have is a shallow bird's eye view looking west. We have City Park Drive in the foreground, a little bit to the tennis courts. The park continues much behind us as well and continues beyond what we see to the picnic areas and up to the county park as well. And we have Crystal Springs Road to the right behind the eucalyptus trees. And we have our new combined recreation and aquatic center shown here on the right. And that idea and the strategy here was how do we get, enhance the park to have the park continue to flow around the building. This arcing shape that we've created is a way to make sure the open spaces are honored, the whole outdoor experience is beautiful. And the Park Pavilion strategy is to take each of the three primary programmatic areas, the aquatics on the distant part, the recreation in the middle, and the community spaces closest up, to have each one of those have a distinct identity with indoor connection spaces and connective tissue between them. And so, that's what we see here with these features, looking to really just create a beautiful, harmonious design that will fit into the park. We'll give you a little fly-through, and I think Vance, I might need you to press. Oh, it goes by itself just with a click. How lovely. So, this is a simplified, three-dimensional model that we're coming in on our realigned City Park Drive, looking at the first, the community pavilion and the deck up above, the entry between going indoor connections, the recreation spaces, the fitness and group exercise, then coming up to, if the budget is adequate, the pool, the water's very transparent there, the pool's full, secure boundaries all around it, and having the distinct roof forms that people were looking forward to, and having distinct character. So, it's not just one big sort of monolithic building, but the pavilions break down the scale of the building and create some unique character. And now, sort of arcing back around it, you see there's a lot of opportunity for each of these pavilions and features of the building to really connect back and create wonderful indoor/outdoor connections, views, and just so as you're using the facility, you'll get to enjoy both all the features inside and what's outdoors. So, a static view of just the model that we see, another bird's eye view looking towards the north and towards the east, and the view towards the entry, having much better street presence and park presence as you come in for it. There's a lot more we can present, but we're really just at the very beginning of the design process. It was wonderful to get the amount of, we do a lot of community engagement of projects all around California. You usually expect to hear some constructive criticism. We were so overwhelmed by positive support for both of these design strategies, and people are so excited for it. I really think we have really the, all the impetus to move forward and to continue to refine this project through the next phases to deliver to you a fantastic project that meets those goals, which is the segue to the final part of the presentation, which what comes next. With your approval of the conceptual design phase and with your authorization to start with schematic design, the project would then go through from the 15% to the 30% milestone to the 60% to 90% getting ready to bid by the end of 2020. And then, by the end of 2021, the goal is to then have this project open up. So, did I get those dates right? Okay, great. And with that, I turn it, we'll leave this beautiful rendering on the, and our whole team is available for questions, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much for the presentation, from all of you and the work and the effort. Questions or comments from council? Michael?
Thank you for all the work that you've put into this. And I know that, I've seen you guys out there in the community. You're definitely making yourselves available. But I was looking at the number of responses, and it was about 400 in total responses? Is that what I was seeing on that graph?
Over 1,700.
1,700. Okay. Okay. And for a project like this, in your experience, is that a fairly good response, or is it average?
Pretty, you're up there. Very high up there. I would say, most cities, when you do public outreach, just in community meetings, if you can get 15, 30 people to attend, you're usually pretty pleased. Once you hit over 500, councils are usually pretty impressed. I would say anything over 1,700, you should be very pleased that you've got such great engagement and participation from your community.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments from council? Irene? Any questions, I apologize.
Thank you, too. It's fabulous, all the things that you've put together and all the community input that you've gathered. I just have a couple of kind of housekeeping questions, I guess. Has any thought been given about where the old pool is and what happens with that? Do we demolish it and use it for parking, or what's with that?
Excellent question. I apologize for leaving that out of the presentation. So, the general concept is, so the pool, existing pool, is in this new meadow space here. So, the idea of, and it was a question in the community, what's happening to it, with both the pool and the Recreation Center being combined. It's an indoor pool as the foundation of the building. That is the third pavilion here. If we have budget for an outdoor pool, it will be adjacent to it. If we have budget for an outdoor pool, it will be adjacent to it. And the indoor pool will, even if that is the only pool, will have indoor-outdoor connections, doors that can open up, you can go out towards an outdoor deck. So it will have that wonderful year-round feel and the indoor-outdoor connections that we want. The pool can remain up during construction, which is one of the advantages of this strategy. And then we would, at the end, remove the existing pool and restore the open space in its place.
Okay. And my other question is about solar paneling or solar roof. I thought I heard someone mention something about it and I was just making sure.
Yeah, Dawn asked me to mention that and I left that out. I apologize for going brief, so briefly. The roofs that we see here are definitely all great candidates for solar panels. And so in part of our planning is to see how this building can be potentially net-zero energy, be energy efficient at a minimum and to have that where you could lease the solar panels or other aspects of that and pay that back through your utility purchases. So we'll definitely be refining the design and we've already internally been calculating how much roof space we need to get a significant portion of the energy usage of the building covered through the rooftops.
Okay. Have you, and I've read someplace, and I don't know any of the details, but I've read about solar panels that are the roof or the roof is made of solar panels. I don't know if that's even practical or anything, but it was just an intriguing idea.
There are lots of different solar technologies. I don't know that those technologies are exactly appropriate for this scale of roof here, but, right. But we'll look at which type of solar panels and usually the crystalline panel arrays and arranging them on either the flat roofs or the sloped roofs for, it has excellent solar orientation for this project. So we're heading it off in a good direction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Lauren?
One final comment. Great presentation, thank you so much. And I'm excited, it's like, so next question is, when can we start digging? But really, in reality of it is, is that the longer we wait and go through this process, construction costs are going up. So when I hear the end of 2020, how do we improve that date? How do we get there closer or sooner?
Excellent question. And I started alluding to some of the thought process that we've already started putting into that. Opportunities that we have to improve the parking lots and perhaps city parkway as initial bid packages potentially could reduce the project schedule, produce, reduce escalation associated with the project. And possibly, probably one of the biggest incentives to look into that is to improve access and usability of the park so that we're not being quite so disruptive in one big move. We add the extra parking, improve the street, let the community have access and use that while the building is being constructed. We have other ideas that we are going to continue to pursue at looking at reduction of the construction schedule. And what I just mentioned potentially could reduce the construction schedule from anywhere to three to four months, just on the tail end. But those are all great, great strategies that we're starting to think about now.
Great, thank you.
Marty? Sorry.
Yes, it's very impressive. And I'm almost impressed with your outreach and your communication to our community. I definitely want to thank you for that. You mentioned the add-on of this track. Do you have an estimate of what that cost would be? It's really preliminary, but...
Yeah, it's actually not as expensive as you would imagine because the structure is already there for the building. My recollection, and don't quote me, is it's like $750,000 or less. But those opportunities, we're not going to let fall by the wayside. We are committed to tracking those through schematic design, working with the funding plan, working with the design, working with prioritization of figuring out what exactly are the most important elements to include in this budget and move forward with those. And so those are all things that can be worked out and identified and decided upon during schematic design.
Great. And I really like how you're thinking to phase and kind of do different parts of the project. I think it would be great to go ahead and do those, do the parking on the very east side of, it's tough getting to the park, you know, especially with, on that side, it's more catering to the younger, the younger kids, so. And parking for baseball is terrible. So I think a lot of people will be happy with, happy for that. So it's a great job.
Any other questions or comments? Any action from council? This is a resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Very exciting, the work begins. Thank you.